Edel Town, Ohio City Council Meeting for Tuesday, October 21st, 2025. Please join me for a moment of meditation followed by the Pledge of Allegiance to the American Flag. You will hear three taps of the gavel when it is time to stand. Please join me in a moment of meditation now. As Clerk of Council, Mrs. Amy Skank is not here this evening, Assistant Law Director, Mr. Jack Hemingway, please call the attendance roll.
Ms. Carter? Mr. West?
Here.
Mr. Horn?
Here.
Mayor Slankah?
Here.
Mr. Lally.
Thank you. First on the agenda this evening is executive session. Do I hear a motion to move to executive session under the authority of O R C 121.22 G six, details relative to the security arrangements and emergency response protocols for a public body or a public office? If disclosure of the matters discussed could reasonably be expected to jeopardize the security of the public body or public office?
Motion.
Do we have a second?
Second.
It has been properly moved and seconded. To move to executive session, we will proceed to vote. Mr. Hemingway, please call the roll.
Mr. West?
Yes.
Mr. Horn?
Yes.
Mayor Slankah?
Yes.
Ms. Carter?
Yes.
Mr. Lally?
Yes.
The yeses have it and the motion passes. Council will now move to executive session. Mr. West?
Yes.
Mr. Horn?
Here.
Mayor Slankah?
Here.
Mr. Lally?
Present.
Thank you. First on the agenda this evening is executive session. Do I hear a motion to move to executive session under the authority of O R C 121.22 G six, details relative to the security arrangements and emergency response protocols for a public body or a public office? If disclosure of the matters discussed could reasonably be expected to jeopardize the security of the public body or public office?
Motion.
Do we have a second?
Second.
It has been properly moved and seconded. To move to executive session, we will proceed to vote. Mr. Hemingway, please call the roll.
Mr. West?
Yes.
Mr. Horn?
Yes.
Mayor Slankah?
Yes.
Ms. Carter?
Yes.
Mr. Lally?
Yes.
The yeses have it and the motion passes. Council will now move to executive session.
Do we have a motion to return to open session?
Motion.
We have a second.
Second.
It has been properly moved and seconded to return to open session. We will proceed to vote. Mr. Hemnaway, please call the roll.
Mr. Horn?
Yes.
Mayor Slankka?
Yes.
Mr. Lally?
Yes.
Ms. Carter?
Yes.
Mr. West?
Yes.
Okay, the yeses have it. The motion passes. Council will now return to open session. The next item on the agenda this evening is citizen comments. Professional presentation, free or foul language is expected. This is not the time for debate, questions and answer, or any back and forth conversation. This is a time for you, our residents, to be able to present in front of council on record, uninterrupted, and have the floor. After the meeting, your comment cards will be given to the city manager, and she will assign a member of staff to reply to you as appropriate. We have received two comment cards this evening. I will prompt each speaker for their next steps when they reach the podium. I would like to call Larry Silas to the podium. You may stand or sit according to your preference. Please adjust the microphone and speak directly into the microphone at all times. Before we begin, please state your full name and Middletown residence, work address, or interest in the city for the record. You will then have four minutes of uninterrupted speech. Please commence.
Hello, my name is Larry Silas. I live at 1211 Elm Street. And this is probably a little unorthodox, but it's 2025, and a lot of things are out of the ordinary. I'm here today because the next meeting will be occurring on Election Day, and my name will be on the ballot. I've been attending council meetings since I filed my petitions in May to try and get a feel for how meetings operate if I find myself sitting where you all are in January. And I have witnessed a lot, I've learned some things, and I know some ways I would behave differently if the people of Middletown elect me. I attended a vigil for Stephen Howard on Sunday, and I was present at the meeting. His family and friends came and spoke with you all. Not everyone presented themselves in a manner that I thought reflected well on the council. From what I've learned these past few months is that the council is responsible for many things that happen within the city, from park development to allocations of funds to local businesses like Abilities First, and so much more. But I also believe that the health and growth of the city has a lot to do with the people that live and work here. And the citizens deserve a council that will not only improve the city and make it safer, but also a council that shows it actually cares about the people that live here, care about the people who take the time to come and speak with council to be heard, not just overlooked and ignored. And if I'm elected, I will fight to make Middletown a better place, and I will make sure that people know they aren't being ignored. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Silas. Next, I would like to call Ms. Jennifer Chen to the podium. You may stand or sit according to your preference. Please adjust the microphone and speak directly into the microphone at all times. Before we begin, please state your full name and Middletown residence or interest in the city for the record. You will then have four minutes of uninterrupted speech. Please commence. Is that Mike picking her up? Yes.
Okay. My name is Jennifer Chen, 23 Santa Fe Road. Good leadership is essential for the success of any organization, and it starts at the very top. Here, we're talking about city, the council and city manager. Over the past three years, I have watched as this city has brazenly violated federal law and regulations, state law, the constitution, and the laws of this city. Leadership isn't just about being friends and getting along. It's about having the moral backbone to stand up against what's wrong publicly. It's taken me a long time to find the courage to speak. I have a justifiable fear of retaliation. With only four minutes, I'm going to stick to my own experiences and one other item. However, everything I'm going to relate is backed up by hard evidence and multiple witnesses. These experiences illustrate the state of leadership in this city. I have freely volunteered my time and my knowledge of city government to help this city thrive. But never, in my wildest imagination, did I think doing so would result in physical violence being directed at me, that my family's income and health insurance would be put in jeopardy, that I would be the subject of a slanderous public tirade, and that my position on the city on the city commission would be taken away. The first of these occurred when I was invited to an Amanda Task Force meeting. Mr. Lally, as city manager, was sitting catty-cornered to me right about here. I made a polite fact-based remark that he didn't like. He became enraged, reared up out of his seat, raised his hand at me, and then roaring, slammed his hand on the table, this close to me. A dozen people, including two council members, were present, yet I have never received an apology from anyone for that terrifying incident. Next, realizing the city was misspending CDBG funds, my husband contacted HUD, who suggested we submit citizens' complaints, which we did. HUD agreed with us, and the city had to take corrective action. In response, Mr. Lally, as city manager, called the mayor of the village where my husband is administrator and left a message, a recorded message accusing him of misusing his authority to submit a complaint on behalf of the village against another jurisdiction, Middletown. If he wasn't such a valuable and professional employee, or if his boss had had a grudge against him, he could have lost his job. This council had a copy of that phone call when they were deciding who to appoint to council. Did anybody ask if we were okay? Nope, they appointed him to council. Earlier this year, in response to my comments during the public hearing, Mr. Lally, as council member from the DAAS, unleashed a tirade impugning my credibility, livestreamed and recorded for posterity. Finally, I applied to be reappointed to the historic commission. There were four applicants for four seats. This council decided to leave the seat vacant rather than reappoint a resident who, as a planner, is highly qualified for the position. Why? I don't know. I do know that I was speaking out against and investigating inappropriate actions of this city, such as deliberately circumventing regulations and gaslighting and undermining the legal authority of the commission in order to demolish structurally sound, historically contributing buildings in the nationally recognized Oakland Historic District. Mr. Lally, as city manager, was a senior staff member of the committee making those decisions and supervising those staff. The most egregious action by Mr. Lally, as city manager, violated the constitutional and human rights of some of the most vulnerable and traumatized people in this community, the homeless. Having no confidence in this council, I have been in contact with outside authorities about this with my evidence and witnesses. I would love to help my community, but the door has been repeatedly slammed in my face. I don't dare to even try. That's enough. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Jen. This concludes our public participation. The next agenda item is council comments. We will begin to my left with Councilmember Lally, followed by Councilmember Carter, then to my right with Councilmember West, followed by Councilmember Horn. I will speak last. Mr. Lally?
Thank you, Mayor. First of all, I want to say I absolutely categorically 100% deny every accusation that Ms. Chen that you made against me, and I'm going to leave it at that. If you, if you want to accuse me of breaking laws, then you better have the evidence of such, because I have broken no laws, and I did not do any of the things that you said I did. So I will leave it at that, and that's all I have this evening. Mayor?
Thank you, Mr. Lally. Mrs. Carter?
Good evening. I don't have a lot to say, but I wanted to shout out to Scott that I see that they're down there at the Douglas Park digging up the ground to put in pipes for a real, a real, what do you call them? Splash pad. And I am really pleased with what I see. Also, I wanted to talk a little bit about a group of children and adults that I've been experiencing because of, they, they play down at the Barnet's Field, and it's called the Little Midies of Middletown. A bunch of wonderful adults and children, no fighting, everyone's happy, everyone's supporting them, and on the 11th, they had a football game, and the dads cheered with the cheerleaders. A couple of the dads even had on tutus, but it was so wonderful, and it was a diverse group of children, a diverse group of parents. It's beautiful. And if you guys don't have anything to do on this Sunday, they're playing again, run down there and look at them, because they're doing a great job. And that's all I have to say.
Thank you, Mrs. Carter. Mr. West?
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, everyone. Not too much to say tonight. Just wanted to thank the Howard family and, and their close personal friend that I've had several conversations with. We were texting again last night. I, I wanted to thank them for their patience and their understanding during the course of the investigation, and, and thank Middletown Police. I know it's, it's difficult to, to handle these types of investigations. You know, people watch things on, on, on TV and they expect, you know, things to happen much quickly, but oftentimes it, it's much slower. Another thing, too, is people in this town have got to learn what a red light is. It's getting absolutely ridiculous. You know, it's, and I had this conversation with several people this week. It's not even passenger vehicles. It's school buses. It is school buses. It's semi-trucks. Everybody, a red light is just a figment of imagination in this town, and it's, it's getting ridiculous. You know, a lot of us, you know, once you're, you know, whether it's you in, in the car or when your kids start driving, you know, the number one thing I, you know, I've told, you know, my daughter when she started driving, I'm like, wait a couple seconds before you go through that light. And even when you have a green light and you're approaching that intersection, look, look both ways. I mean, this is, this is absolutely unreal. It, it's almost a daily occurrence when I'm driving around town that there is somebody that not only blows a red light, but blows a red light by like three to four seconds after it's turned green for the other, the other traffic pattern. It's horrible. So that's all I had, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. West. Mr. Horn?
Good evening. First, thank you, Ms. Councilwoman Carter, for sharing that story with the, with the kids playing football and such. This, this is a fun time of year, I think, is, is fall, when we start, you know, the days, daylight days are getting shorter, but there's so many activities to do outside. And then we also have things that I call what, what I call the fabric of, of Middletown, being the, the Middletown Arts, even Bouver has glass classes, and then we have entertainment at the Sorg. And I encourage our citizens to take advantage of those events, because in the future, and I truly believe this, I do have hope that we will become more and more of a event destination, because I think that's where you start, when people want to come to our city to see events, to participate in, in events, and we have a lot of opportunities to do that. The next thing I want to talk about, and I appreciate Larry Silas being here and, and others who are looking toward helping the city, doing your civic duty. That's one reason I did what I did here. It's hard sometimes, because people have different opinions, and we have that wonderful First Amendment right, so sometimes you can say things, and maybe it's not true, or maybe it's distorted, but it's what makes the fabric of Middletown. I've always said, when we had this room filled all the way to the, to the rafters, it's good when we can see you and hear your pitch, pace, and power. It's been kind of refreshing not in, not getting all the emails where you actually have to talk to me. So, and that's what I prefer, because I, I can know what's real. But other folks who are considering not running in this voting cycle, they ask what, what the advice I'd give them, and the advice is this, is join boards. The boards, even though you're paid the low, low price of free, I mean, here, you know, I'm making 350 bucks a month, so yeah, that's covering my water bill if I had one. But to participate with the boards, because then you are sitting here, you know how to do the Potomac Two-Step and get the votes that you need for what you feel passionate about. But then also, you're dealing with citizens, you're dealing with the company, being the city of Middletown, you're dealing with people who are coming into our city for the good, and sometimes for the bad, and you have a voice, and that will help you to no end to be able to sit here and listen and be able to make a, a decision that is what's best. For, as I've always said, the company, being the city of Middletown, the citizens, local business leaders, and then lastly, developers, innovators, and investors. So if you are thinking about this on the next voting cycle, that's what I would give advice to, is get involved, so you kind of know how this all works, because there is a lot of work, there's a lot of meetings on top of the meetings. This, you also will be on other boards, so you can participate in a non-voting way. And I do greatly appreciate citizens who do step up and serve and try to help all of those entities. Back to you, Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Horn. And as he was saying, Mr. Horn was saying, there are a lot of events coming up in the next couple of weeks, and I'm going to tell you about some of them. First, the city of Middletown has posted the Middletown Development Code Update online survey, and it is live. This survey will allow the city to collect feedback on how the current development code works, any issues or concerns you may have, and your ideas for improvements. Your responses will be used to provide potential revisions to development code standards, regulations, and administrative procedures and processes. The survey should take about 10 to 15 minutes to complete. Please do read each question carefully. There are no right or wrong answers. Your perspective is what matters most. This survey closes in a few weeks, so please share with your Middletown friends and family and take the survey soon. Please visit cityofmiddletown.org to find the survey. Are you in the mood for something spooky, and educational, and fun? Join tomorrow, Wednesday, October 22nd, from 6:00 to 9:00 p.m. for the South Main Haunted Walking Tour, as they delve into the rich tapestry of the city's past, exploring 28 iconic homes that have witnessed the rise and fall of generations, some rumored to be haunted, while all steeped in the captivating history of Middletown's most influential figures. For more information and tickets, please visit the special events calendar at thewindemere.com. Join DMI, our Main Street Organi-, Main Street America Organization, this Friday, October 24th, for a free family movie night showing of The Nightmare Before Christmas at Governor's Square, located at 1045 Central Avenue in beautiful and historic downtown Middletown from 6:00 p.m. to 8:00 p.m. For more information, please visit the calendar at downtownmiddletown.org. There are so many fun shows and events at Middletown's beautiful and historic Sorg Opera House in the next couple of weeks. Please visit sorgooperhouse.org to find out more information about upcoming events like the Cincinnati Transit Authority playing this Friday, October 24th, a double feature of both Beetlejuice movies this Saturday, October 25th, a guided tour of the historic Sorg Opera House this Sunday, October 26th, and crafting with the classics and multiple showings of The Big Lebowski on Saturday, November 1st. Again, for more information, please visit sorgooperhouse.org. Please join at the MAC, our Middletown Arts Center, located at 130 North Verity Parkway this Friday, October 24th, from 6:00 p.m. to 8:00 p.m. for the area art exhibition opening reception. This is a juried competition open to adult artists working in 2D and 3D media. See the best work from artists within a 50-mile radius of Middletown. The exhibition will run from opening night this Friday through Thursday, December 11th at the MAC. For more information, please visit middletownartscenter.com. This Saturday, October 25th, the Kiwanis Club of Middletown is hosting its 60th Annual Pancake Day from 8:00 a.m. until noon. Located at the Fraternal Order of Eagles 528 at 1300 First Avenue, bring family and friends for all the delicious pancakes you can eat, plus sausage, orange juice, and coffee. You can also enter raffles for all kinds of great gift baskets. Breakfast tickets are just $10 at the door, and it's a perfect way to start your day and raise much-needed money to serve the children of Middletown and surrounding communities. For more information, please visit the Kiwanis Facebook page. The beloved Spooky Car Show and Trunk Retreat is back for another thrilling year, made possible through a special partnership between Middletown Cruise and the City of Middletown. This family-friendly event promises candy, costumes, cars, food vendors, and community spirit, all in one unforgettable night at the Town Mall. This Saturday, October 25th, festivities begin at 2:00 p.m. with the trunk or treat from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. For more information, please visit the city's website at cityofmiddletown.org. Adults can continue the fun this Saturday, October 25th. Get your costumes and dancing shoes ready for the Ghosts and Ghouls Halloween Party from 7:00 p.m. to 1:00 a.m., located at the Windermere at 2 South Main Street in beautiful and historic downtown Middletown. Join for their most frightfully fabulous party of the year with a theme of the Addams Family, live music by Party Punch, a creepy kooky costume contest, and ghastly libations and ghoulish fun. For more information and to purchase tickets, please visit thewindemere.com. The city of Middletown is excited to bring back its annual city-building trick-or-treat and touch-a-truck event, happening in Middletown at the Middletown City Building located at 1 Donham Plaza next Thursday, October 30th, from 3:00 p.m. to 4:45 p.m. Come dress in your spooky best, stop by the different city departments for candy, then go out onto beautiful Donham Plaza to see some of your favorite city vehicles. For more information, please visit our city Instagram account. The entire city of Middletown's 2025 Trick or Treat will take place next Friday, October 31st, from 6:00 p.m. to 8:00 p.m. Please stay tuned online for safety tips for the Halloween and trick-or-treating from the city, Middletown Health Department, and the Middletown Police Department. Our local elections are happening on Tuesday, November 4th. Please be sure to get out and vote. Polls are open from 7:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. To find out where your polling location is and to see your sample ballot, please visit the Butler County Board of Elections website at elections.bcohio.gov. As a reminder, the city of Middletown accepts applications for our boards and commissions throughout the year, so if there is something that you have an interest in and you wish to give back to your city in this way, please do submit your application. To learn more, please visit the city's website at cityofmiddletown.org. Lastly, and as always, there are many ways to get involved with your community and give back. Join a board or committee, run for office, apply for a job with the city, volunteer at the hospital, pick up trash in your neighborhood or park, plant a garden in your yard, smile at a neighbor, find joy and satisfaction for a job well done in whatever work you do, or just have a positive and giving attitude. Find something that you can do regularly and give back. We are all connected, and we are all in this together. The care of our city is an adventure in which we all get to share. That is all for me tonight, and this concludes our council comments. The next agenda item is city manager reports. City Manager Ms. Ashley Combs, you have the floor.
Good evening. So the only item I have tonight is a presentation from Sean Cowan and Nan Cahall from the Council on Aging of Southwestern Ohio for the Elderly Services Program Annual Report. So you have the floor. Thank you.
My name is Sean, and I'm a Butler County resident, and I'm here tonight because I want to share an update on the Butler County Elderly Services Program, known as ESP. The program is funded by the taxpayers of Butler County, and it helps older adults in the county access basic services to help them remain independent in their home, and it provides peace of mind for family and caregivers who need to work or tend to other responsibilities. In 2024, the ESP provided in-home supportive services to more than 4,000 older adults in Butler County. Out of that 4,000, almost 900 of them live directly here in Middletown. I'd like to start by sharing a story from our most recent annual report, which I believe you all have a copy of. This is a story about Ann and Don, and they are former spouses who remain friends and decided to move in together to save money on rent and to help look after each other. Ann is 66, and she left the workplace several years ago because she was diagnosed with COPD. Ann is tethered to an oxygen tank, which was not compatible with her job as a quality engineer. Don, who is 88 now, worked as a painter well into his 70s and all ha-, also has COPD. Today, the two rely on each other and help from ESP to remain independent. Through ESP's consumer-directed care option, they were able to hi-, find and hire their own home health aide, Tina. Tina helps with cleaning and laundry and also drives Ann and Don to medical appointments and to run errands. "We love, love, love her," Ann has said of Tina. The couple also receives home-delivered meals and has received durable medical equipment to help with safety concerns in their bathroom. Monica is the couple's ESP case manager. Her care manager is, is an important part of their team, according to Ann. "Monica takes the time to sit and talk to me and understand what I need." When the landlord raised the rent on their apartment, Monica provided options for other housing in the area, because, as Ann shared, "When you're living on a fixed income, every bit of savings counts." ESP was created for people like Ann and Don, older adults who do the best they can on their own, but reach a point where they must get help or be forced into a nursing home. Most people who move to a nursing home eventually end up on Medicaid, and taxpayers foot that bill. It costs about $8,000 a month for Medicaid care in a nursing home, compared to an average of $425 a month to provide in-home care through the elderly services program. This makes ESP both compassionate and cost-effective. Eligibility for this program begins at age 60. The program serves people who need help with basic daily activities that you and I may take for granted, things like getting dressed, bathing, cooking, or getting to a doctor's appointment. ESP is a community partnership. The program is run by Council on Aging via a contract with the Butler County Commissioners. This partnership includes local contracted service providers who provide the oversight and care and supportive services that clients need. ESP clients have an important role to play in this partnership. Some clients, depending on their resources, participate in cost-sharing, which helps the program stretch their funding to serve more people. which helps the program stretch their funding to serve more people. And finally, it's the taxpayers and voters who play an important role in this partnership. In fact, without their support, the program would not exist. More than 80% of the program's funding comes from the Butler County Senior Services Tax Levy, which was first approved by voters in 1996. The most current senior service levy was renewed in 2020 by a record margin of 77%. Considering the growth in our county's older adult population over the last two decades, it has been remarkable that this levy has not had an increase in 20 years. Since that time, Butler County's older adult population has grown 79%, and ESP is currently serving 50% more people. Despite this, care costs in the program have risen only 18% in 20 years. Today, more than one-third of Butler County households include someone aged 60-plus, accounting for more than 20% of the county's population. And according to Scripps Gerontology Center at Miami University, more than 12,000 Butler County older adults have at least one disability or form of dementia, which could make them eligible for ESP. Chances are you know someone who has benefited or who could benefit from the senior services levy. Despite strong fiscal management over the past 20 years, demand for ESP is now outpacing resources. For the past year, ESP has had to, I'm sorry, manage enrollment, turning away hundreds of seniors who qualify for help. Family caregivers are stretched thin, and ESP is often the lifeline that keeps loved ones at home and out of nursing facilities. The current tax levy that funds ESP will expire at the end of this year. In November, voters will be asked to approve a senior services levy that includes renewal of the existing 1.3 mil levy with a .7 mil increase. The proposed levy will cost homeowners $50 per $100,000 of property value annually. The levy accounts for less than 2% of the average property tax bill. That averages out to $4 per month to ensure these critical services continue and allow vulnerable seniors to remain in their homes. I know I've shared a lot of information about this important program, and I hope you will take a look at the program's annual report. It provides more information about who this program serves and its impact on our entire community. Everyone involved in this program is grateful for the strong support from the community. We appreciate your time. We're happy to answer any questions that you may have. But I also want to add that the senior services levy is going to be issue one on the ballot this year, and this is a renewal and an increase. If it does not pass, the program will no longer function. So I just want to make sure that the public and the community is aware of that. Can I answer any questions for you tonight?
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Any questions from council?
I just had one. It's not even really a question. It was an observation. I saw that 68% versus 32% were women that use ESP. Do you think, I don't know anything about this, but do you think it's just because women are more proactive and they research and so they, you know, there's a lot of guys out there that qualify, or are we just all dying? Like, I just, I mean, that was like, I saw that, I was like, holy cow.
Well, you know, women do outlive men, historically, for the data. Unfortunately, I don't think I can answer that question honestly, Nan. I'm not sure if you could actually answer that question honestly, because I'm not a camera.
Please do come to the microphone. Else we won't be able to record you off online.
Men won't ask for help.
That's what, I think that's what it is.
It is.
I know. That's what I'm thinking too, but...
That is a big disparity, but I bet data does show that women live longer than men. Just, that just is the data.
So how are we to vote? Vote yes for...
Yes.
Vote yes on issue one.
Please, thank you.
Right. Okay, okay.
The yes vote we're looking for.
I've had this service with my mother, and I loved the woman. I thought she was personally for us because anytime we called or anything we needed, she made sure we had it. So yes, vote yes.
Fantastic. We appreciate it.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? All right. Thank you very much. All right, Ms. Combs, anything else before we continue?
That's all for me. Thank you.
All right. Well, thank you. Next on the agenda this evening is the consent agenda. While the consent agenda is generally for consensus items, do any council members wish to remove anything from the consent agenda this evening and move it to the motion agenda?
No, Mayor.
All right. Hearing none, we will continue. Mr. Hemmenway, please present the consent agenda.
First, we have approved the following board and commission meeting minutes. Planning Commission from July 9 and August 21. Architecture Review Board from July 28. We have confirming the conditional appointment of Jackson Beal to the position of patrol officer in the Public Safety Department, Division of Police. Third, we have confirmed the termination of Cameron Latimore, Corrections Officer, Division of Police. And finally, approve and accept the final plat for Renaissance Section 12.
Thank you very much. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
It has been properly moved and seconded. To accept the consent agenda, we will proceed to vote. Mr. Hemmenway, please call the roll.
Mayor Slankow?
Yes.
Mr. Lally?
Yes.
Ms. Carter?
Yes.
Mr. West?
Yes.
Mr. Horn?
Yes.
Yeses have it, and the motion passes. The consent agenda is approved. Our next item is the motion agenda. We have four items on the motion agenda this evening. Mr. Hemmenway, please present item A on the motion agenda.
Motion to authorize the city manager to accept a grant from ODOT to fund the city's required 5% match for the previously approved FAA grant for the jet's roof replacement project.
Thank you. Ms. Combs, the staff report, please.
Middletown Regional Airport had AIG funds from the FAA set to expire this year. The airport received approval for the jet's roof replacement project, which originally required that 5% local match. Recently, ODOT allocated funds to cover the match. On August 5th, 2025, the city council approved the funding for the structure, changing it to that 95% from the FAA and the 5% from ODOT, equating to $12,614. This means the project will cost the airport and city nothing, and the original encumbered amount will return to the airport's expenditure account. If the council does not decide to move forward with the project, the airport will need to pay that expenditure.
Thank you, Ms. Combs. Is there a motion to approve item A to authorize the city manager to accept a grant from ODOT to fund the city's required 5% match for the jet's roof replacement project?
Motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
It has been properly moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, we will proceed to vote. Mr. Hemmenway, please call the roll.
Mr. West?
Yes.
Mr. Horn?
Yes.
Mayor Slankow?
Yes.
Ms. Carter?
Yes.
Mr. Lally?
Yes.
Yeses have it, and the motion passes. Mr. Hemmenway, please present item B on the motion agenda.
Motion to approve the purchase of an outfit package, which includes a front plow, plow hitch, dump body, and salt and sand spreader and the installation thereof on a 2026 International HV507 truck from Henderson Products, Inc. in the amount of $150,471.16 for the Streets Department.
Thank you, Mr. Hemmenway. Ms. Combs, the staff report, please.
The only thing I have to add is this follows the city council's approval of the truck on March 18th, 2025, and there are sufficient funds available in the Garage Fund for the purchase.
Thank you very much. Is there a motion to approve item B to approve the purchase of an outfit package and the installation thereof on a 2026 International HV507 truck from Henderson Products, Inc. in the amount of $150,471.16 for the Streets Department?
Motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
Having been properly moved and seconded, is there any discussion?
Does this mean snow's coming?
Scott Tadj said no. Okay. Any other further questions or comments? All right. Hearing none, we will proceed to vote. Mr. Hemmenway, please call the roll.
Mr. Horn?
Yes.
Mayor Slankow?
Yes.
Mr. Lally?
Yes.
Ms. Carter?
Yes.
Mr. West?
Yes.
Yeses have it, and the motion passes.
Mr. Hemmenway, please present item C on the motion agenda.
Motion to authorize the city manager to grant a temporary easement to Woodard Development LLC in order to signee over the western portion of a city-owned parcel identified as Warren County Parcel Number 0833302014.
Ms. Combs, the staff report, please.
The city is currently working with Woodard Development on the Renaissance Point Project. The first parcel to be transferred is designated for the Sheetz location. During the replat process, it was found that the eastern lot line for Sheetz parcel does not provide enough space for a temporary drainage ditch. Approval of the easement will help address concerns regarding lot size, enabling for a quicker transfer of the parcel. Woodard plans to adjust the boundary after acquisition, which will end the easement. Replanting the lot line before closing would delay the property transfer.
Thank you, Ms. Combs. Is there a motion to approve item C to authorize the city manager to grant a temporary easement to Woodard Development LLC over the western portion of city-owned Warren County Parcel Number 0833302014?
Motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
Having been properly moved and seconded, is there any discussion? Seeing none, we will proceed to vote. Mr. Hemmenway, please call the roll.
Mayor Slankow?
Yes.
Mr. Lally?
Yes.
Ms. Carter?
Yes.
Mr. West?
Yes.
Mr. Horn?
Yes.
Yeses have it, and the motion passes. Mr. Hemmenway, please present item D on the motion agenda.
Motion to approve the purchase of calcium quicklime for the water treatment plant from Carmuse Lime and Stone, Inc. in the amount of $305.98 per ton for truck delivery.
Thank you. Ms. Combs, the staff report, please.
This chemical is essential for the water treatment plant, primarily used for a softening agent, which is estimated 4,300 tons in 2026. The contract runs from January 1st, 2025, to December 31st, 2025, with an option to renew in 2026 at the same price. Carmuse Lime and Stone has agreed to this renewal. While we could formalize a new bid, the price may increase. The chemical's usage varies based on weather and plant conditions, and we estimate a total cost of approximately $1,315,714 for the year.
Thank you, Ms. Combs. Is there a motion to approve item D to approve the purchase of calcium quicklime for the water treatment plant in the amount of $305.98 per ton for truck delivery?
Motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
It has been properly moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, we will proceed to vote. Mr. Hemmenway, please call the roll.
Mr. Lally?
Yes.
Ms. Carter?
Yes.
Mr. West?
Yes.
Mr. Horn?
Yes.
Mayor Slankow?
Yes. The yeses have it, and the motion passes. This concludes the motion agenda. The next item on the agenda is legislation. We have four items of legislation this evening. Assistant Law Director Mr. Jack Hemmenway, the legislation, please.
First, we have ordinance number 2025-58, an ordinance authorizing a loan from the city of Middletown to Sorgh Opera Revitalization Group, Inc. in the amount of $80,000 and declaring an emergency.
Thank you. Ms. Combs, the staff report, please.
Earlier this year, Sorgh approached the city for funding. City staff consulted with legal counsel to assess the possibility of a loan. Sorgh received $375,000 from a grant from the Ohio Facilities Construction Commission, OFCC, to support the project. The loan will assist the contractor down payments, estimated at $65,000, with a total loan amount set at $80,000 to cover contingencies. Sorgh will repay the city once they receive reimbursements from the OFCC. The loan will mature on May 1st, or I'm sorry, May 31st, 2026. Emergency passage is requested to expedite the paperwork to keep the project on track.
Thank you, Ms. Combs. Is there a motion to approve the ordinance?
Motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
It has been properly moved and seconded. Is there any discussion?
I do.
Mr. Horn?
What this is, is like, city manager Combs brought out, the OFCC has a grant, and these are funds for the necessary repairs for this building that is from the 19th century. And it says, not only it's the arts, it's the fabric of Middletown and our citizens and people who are not citizens come and enjoy the shows at the Sorgh. This is a necessity, and we should always stand tall when it comes to this. What this is, is this is a backstop. So, and I can speak to this, I'm a contractor, but nine times out of 10, I do not require a deposit, unless it's a phased project. But others do. So what the OFCC says is if it's a non, it's just a contract, don't worry about it. They'll pay it. But if a roofer needs X amount of dollars for a deposit to buy the materials, that's what the city will be doing. So once that job is done, that contractor will invoice, give his mechanic's lien waiver, they'll send it up to the state, and then the funds will be reimbursed to the city, and everything will be fine. So that's what this is. This is just a protection or a backstop to help them with their deposits that we're doing with this note.
Thank you, Mr. Horn. Is there any further discussion on the legislation? Hearing none, we will proceed to vote. Mr. Hemmenway, please call the roll.
Ms. Carter?
Yes.
Mr. West?
Yes.
Mr. Horn?
Yes.
Mayor Slankow?
Yes.
Mr. Lally?
Yes.
Yeses have it, and the legislation passes. Mr. Hemmenway, the next legislative item, please.
Ordinance number 2025-59, an ordinance establishing a procedure for and authorizing an amendment to a contract with Bricks, Inc. for fire station alerting systems at the new fire stations and declaring an emergency.
Thank you. Ms. Combs, the staff report, please.
This request seeks authorization for emergency change in order to contract with Bricks for the fire station alerting system totaling $4,750. This funding will cover unexpected changes in speaker types and quantities, as well as upgrades to wiring from the unshielded to shielded cable. On July 18th, 2023, the city council approved the purchase of 191,000 for the fire station alerting system, Bricks, funded by a supplemental appropriation from the fire station levy. This adjustment is essential for the alerting system's operation, and the total project cost remains below the original estimates. Again, this request is classified an emergency to maintain essential operations.
Thank you, Ms. Combs. Is there a motion to approve the ordinance?
Motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
It has been properly moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, we will proceed to vote. Mr. Hemmenway, please call the roll.
Mr. West?
Yes.
Mr. Horn?
Yes.
Mayor Slankow?
Yes.
Ms. Carter?
Yes.
Mr. Lally?
Yes.
Yeses have it, and the legislation passes. Mr. Hemmenway, the next legislative item, please.
Ordinance number 2025-60, an ordinance authorizing the application of funds from the Warren County Career Center in order to defees and/or redeem bonds previously issued by the city of Middletown, Ohio for the acquisition and construction and of the Community Learning Center, as well as authorizing the termination or modification of certain transaction documents executed in conjunction with the issuance of such bonds and authorizing actions related thereto and declaring an emergency. No action requested until November 4th, 2025.
Thank you. Ms. Combs, the staff report, please.
This request presents an ordinance to use funds from the Warren County Career Center to defees or redeem the remaining Series 2010 bonds for the Green Tree Health Sciences Academy. Originally issued on August 3rd, 2010, the bonds included $5 million Series 2010A and $200,000 Series 2010B to finance the academy, which is now solely occupied by the Career Center, responsible for all lease payments. Currently, $2,210,000 remains on the bonds. The Career Center wants the funds to pay off the bonds, and there is no cost to the city, thereby eliminating its liability. An emergency second reading is requested for prompt action on the process.
Thank you, Ms. Combs. As this is a second reading emergency, there is no action to be taken at this time. However, is there any discussion from council? Hearing none, we will proceed. Mr. Hemmenway, the last legislation item, please.
Ordinance number 2025-61, an ordinance establishing a procedure for and authorizing purchases of asphalt by the city purchasing agent in 2026. This is a first reading.
Thank you. Ms. Combs, the staff report, please.
This is to request authorization for purchasing asphalt for paving projects in 2026 not to exceed $350,000. Asphalt is only available from two companies locally making outside sourcing time-consuming due to the costly transportation and labor. It is also not consistently available at both plants, requiring purchases from whichever is open on needed days. Bidding for each project as asphalt is needed would cause delays and is not a feasible option. The 2026 budget includes $350,000 for the street paving projects. It is recommended that the city council waive the bidding procedure and allow for the purchase of the asphalt at the lowest responsive price as needed, up to that $350,000.
Thank you, Ms. Combs. As this is a first reading, there is no action to be taken at this time. However, is there any discussion from council? Hearing none, this concludes the legislation for the evening. The next item on the agenda is unfinished business. Do any council members have anything that they would like to bring up under unfinished business? Hearing none, this concludes unfinished business. The next item on the agenda is new business. Do any council members have any new business this evening?
I do.
Mr. Horn?
So I'd like to know what Duke's schedule is out on Renaissance? Where the wood poles are kind of stopping you from being able to turn in without, you know, T-boning your car? I see they have the new steel poles up, but do we have a schedule on when they're going to move that power over and remove the wood poles? And if we're not, then I'd like to have an answer by the next council meeting.
We'll have an answer by the next council meeting.
Appreciate it. Well, and the reason I bring that up is because Renaissance, I mean, they have the roads paved, they have the nice LED lighting. They've got it leveled out really nice, and it's what I call shovel-ready. It is ready for things to start. So I'm sure whoever's going to be there doesn't want to have their, you know, have their customers clip a wood pole in the process. So just trying to keep that urgency going on the schedule.
Thank you. Do any other council members have anything they'd like to bring up under new business? Hearing none, this concludes new business for the evening. And this also concludes our regular city council meeting for Middletown, Ohio, Tuesday, October 21st, 2025, at 7:16 p.m. This meeting is adjourned until Tuesday, November 4th, 2025, at 5:30 p.m. in these chambers for our next regular city council meeting. Thank you and good night.